Good morning, AM 1280 listeners. You are tuning into Political Pitchforks. I am Susan Smith, longtime conservative, and I am here this week again with Jeremy. He was off last week, and we missed him, but glad to have you back, Jeremy. And I want, I'm gonna turn it over to you to kick off our two guests, because I think this can be a great, great episode, and nobody better than you to kick it off.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Susan. And, you know, we've been interviewing a lot of candidates for statewide office or Congress, and today we're bringing in two conservative legislators, Representative Drew Roach and Senator Bill Liski. They've got great voting records. I like what they're doing, their approach in the legislature. So I'm a big fan. I'm a big fan of both of them, and endorse them. And they're running for reelection. I'd like to talk to them about kind of their priorities in the legislature, and we'll talk about Senator Nicole Mitchell's sentencing this week. She was sentenced to jail, work release, and then also talk to them about a special session, which may or may not occur. But gentlemen, welcome. Representative Drew Roach, you want to introduce yourself to the listeners and tell us where you, which area you represent, and kind of a little bit of the history of what you've done in the legislature since being elected?
Sure. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for having me on. Yeah, first time representative, you know, first half of the first term. Live in Farmington, represent House District 50AB, so it's areas of Dakota, Rice, and Goodhue County. You know, it's, you know, help Bill, and Bill's my senator, so it's nice to have somebody, you know, in the legislature that can kind of take you under their wing and help guide you and teach you some things. And so I've been fortunate enough to have a good senator and Senator Liski to do that. And yeah, no, I'm excited to be here. You know, I paint myself as a very grassroots candidate. You know, I started off in 2020, really getting involved in the BPOU, or as an activist. I was a, you know, business owner, a father, you know, somebody just upset with what was going on in the government overreach, and both at the state and federal level, where COVID, you know, wreaked havoc on families and businesses. And that was the turning point for me to get involved and say enough is enough. I'm gonna have my voice be heard. So I started getting involved in the BPOU and became a delegate, and active, and vocal, and one thing led to another, and the opportunity arose, just kind of just fell in my lap to run. I had no expectation or thought, or, you know, anything like that. I don't have a political science degree, which I think is a bonus.
A Harvard degree?
No, we don't need these political, these poly sci majors coming in and telling us, you know, how to run government, you know, and so I-
Theoretically, theoretically.
Theoretically, yeah. Yeah, we have the administrative state for that. But yeah, no, so it was great. I got involved and got activated and decided to run and won last election. And I'm just eager to continue to fight for the people and have a liberty-minded legislative plan and ideology, and, you know, hit red as much as I have to on these omnibus bills, because I think that's one of the big problems that we have, is these inflated bills. I know they're same subject, so they defy logic in that they're not against the Constitution, but I would argue they are. And, you know, I got voted as the Mr. No on the House floor. I think I voted green a few times to the applause of all of my colleagues, and it was a single subject line item. So it was easy to vote green on a bill that was standing on its own. So I take that philosophy, and I'm gonna continue to do that. And I think more candidates that get elected need to have that perspective and be willing to push back on the administrative state and say enough is enough. I didn't run or join politics to continue to go along with the status quo, but to change the status quo. And I think we get more members like that, we'll be able to make a big change in government, and I'm excited to continue that.
I just want to make one comment about the single-subject bill thing. So I think that what that actually means is that it has to address the one subject of the area of the life of the people that will be affected.
Yeah.
As opposed to the subject being whatever they want to do to control you. So I think your perspective on what subject, how you define the subject-
Yeah.
-is really critical, and we have literally tipped that cart over.
Correct.
Very much so.
Yeah, the establishment legislators in St. Paul would lead you to believe that single-subject means the funding of government.
Right, yeah, yeah. It typically goes like, hey, I know you're new here, but that's not how we do things. And it's like, well, I know you've been doing the same thing over and over and over, but that's not how I'm gonna do it. So I'll continue to hit no until we do the right thing and work for the people and have single-line items, right? So until we do that, I'll continue to be the, you know, the thorn in the side and vote no, because we need to get to a point where, you know, we actually work for the people.
I kind of think the T-shirt could say, always vote no. Like, that should be that you should always start with it's a no?
Yeah. Yeah, and I had a constituent pushback and say, whoa, don't you want to, you know, when you keep voting no, it seems like you're just this abrasive person that doesn't want to work with anybody. And I said, well, no, I'm just not willing to trade really bad provisions for mediocre provisions. That's not what government's for. You know, every one of these bills that get put in an omnibus bill, they get put in there because they don't have the merit to stand on their own. And I'm not gonna support a bill that doesn't have the own, enough votes to get through committee, let alone trade it for another piece of garbage legislation. So I just refuse to go along with that status quo.
And I've explained to people that the default in St. Paul is to look at the person who's authoring the bill, and if they are Republican, and you're a Republican, then the default vote is yes, until someone changes your mind. And if the, if it's a Democrat carrying the bill, it's opposite your party, then the default is no, until someone changes your mind. Whereas I would say it should always be no, until someone can change my mind, that I should support the bill, and why. Senator Liski, or as the Germans would say, Mr. Senator Doctor Liski, they have stock titles over there.
Yep.
Welcome to the show. Explain to the listeners who you are, what your turning point was, if we can say that. I used to say, what engaged you, or what was-
Sure.
-what got you involved in government. But what was your turning point? And how long have you served, and kind of what are your priorities?
So we'll start with the last question first, because I like to go in reverse order sometimes, plus that way if I lose track, you can always redirect. So I've been serving for three years. I started 10 days prior to the endorsing convention is when I announced my campaign. So let's just say, you know, whenever anybody says that an endorsement is stacked against them, I always tell them, well, I showed up when there was no delegates, because I didn't stack the delegates, and I still managed to show up and win the endorsement. So basically, my why, why did I do it? I showed up in 2022. In 2020, I started getting more involved in politics. Obviously, COVID again being another turning point, similar to Drew's. I own my own small business. I'm a chiropractor. I'm a man of many hats. I always tell people, if I start listing off my titles, we'll be here for a few minutes. But with that being said, I'm a chiropractor, own a small business. My family ended up trying to run a business on 30% of our income, which is, as we all know, not possible, especially when you have overhead. That, for some reason, the overhead didn't reduce their costs by 30, down to 30%. So I don't quite understand, oh, wait, that's how that works. So when I got told I can only see a certain number of patients in a day, I can only have a patient every half hour versus, you know, my normal routine, I started asking a lot of questions, and we were not getting a whole lot of answers. And that was something that really made me mad, and I got quite frustrated. In fact, I, for someone who was never political, I hated being political. It was not something I liked to do, because of course, it meant that you had to be on one side or the other, it seems, especially in today's world. It's, you take, pick a side. And so when, when it got to that point where I had to say, hey, enough's enough, I called my legislator at the time, which was Todd Lippert. You served with him, so you know who he is. I called and left him a message, and it took him three days to call me back. And then it was a staffer that called me back, and then they hung up on me in the middle of the conversation. So that was an interesting situation.
It was providence.
So needless to say, I said, all right, it's time to get involved. And I actually started in a local campaign. I ran for mayor as a write-in candidate, because our local issues were a problem. There was some money moving around and some land moving around that I didn't agree with. So with that being said, I represent the Senate District 58. I represent Southern Dakota County. I represent the north half of Rice County, and a little bit of Goodhue, and a little bit of Scott County. So maybe we can get back to answering some more questions when we get back, but it sounds like we're running out of time.
I'm pretty sure that we're gonna hit a lot of issues-
Absolutely.
-when we come back. And we'll be back. We just have a couple-minute break, and we'll be back shortly. Welcome back to Political Pitchforks on AM 1280, The Patriot. I am Susan Smith, here with Jeremy and Senator Bill Liski, and Representative Drew Roach. And as we start this segment, I think, Jeremy, why don't we start talking about how our government works, works? How does it work?
Or it doesn't work. But for those listening who aren't intimately familiar with the legislature, you know, I served three terms in the Minnesota Legislature. I wasn't a staffer before I was, in fact, I didn't spend any time at the Capitol before I was elected. So I came in like these guys did, where it's a learning experience to see how the process works and things. And right away, leadership will take you aside and say, look, you're new here, so why don't you just kind of stay quiet and sit to the side for a while? And then maybe after four or five years, we'll let you lead on a few things. You know, they planned for a long process of being involved in the legislature, which I wasn't, I didn't want to be a lifer. I was there to try to make change. And I feel like you guys are too. One of the things that really shocked me was how the House is very much staged. If you wanna, if you want to, first of all, you're given notice that a bill is coming to the floor for a vote, and you have a specific time period that you have to submit your amendments ahead of time. So the majority party brings bills to the floor, the minority party offers amendments, and then the majority party offers amendments to your amendments. And everything has to be prefiled, basically pre-approved. And then when you go to caucus, before you go to the floor, leadership tells you how to vote. Here's what the bills are today. Here's where the amendments are. This is where we think you should vote on amendments, and this is where we think you should vote on the amendments to the amendments. And then you talk about how you're gonna game things out. Whereas in the Senate, the bills are filed, they talk about amendments being offered, but you can, at any time, offer an amendment verbally on the floor to change things, and actually go back and forth and compromise, and actually legislate in real time. And so therefore, in the House, everybody has little stickers by their desks saying, push these buttons for me at these times. This is how I'm voting, and they leave the floor. Whereas in the Senate, people are actually paying attention to what's going on. That was my observation. Drew, what's your opinion on how things operate on the floor? Is that kind of match what you think?
Spot on. Yeah. I mean, I take pride in making sure that I'm sitting in my seat all the time, you know. It's definitely theater. It's same way in committee. And it gets frustrating at times when you have members that it seems like they're never in their chair. I mean, you get really, pretty pull up, you could pull up cameras for, you know, every floor session, and you consistently see the same seats empty. And, you know, for me, that's problematic. I mean, I know, in a lot of cases, I know how I'm gonna vote on that typically omnibus bill anyway, so it's pretty easy. But at the same time, I need to be present and listening and attentive, and you definitely don't see that. And it is a little frustrating at times to, you know, my seatmates know, don't ever touch my buttons. I'm the one who hits the button. I will, I will hit my no button, so I don't need anybody's help with that. And typically, I'm on the floor for that vote, so I don't ever have run into that too many times. Usually, I'm meeting with a constituent or something in the hallway, but outside of that, yeah, it's a lot of theater. It's frustrating.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you a little hint. I found that if you take a paper clip, and you jam it alongside the red button, it'll automatically vote no every single time they open the board. So if I know that I'm gonna be voting no on all these amendments, and there's no, there's nothing filed that I'm gonna vote yes for, I can leave the floor with that thing jammed in there, and it comes up red automatically all the time.
First vote. Munson's always voting right away.
You're never present either, because, you know, if you leave it in there, your president's-
That was what the speaker once said, Munson, you gotta vote yes on present. You can't vote no. So I had to change that, but yes. So Senator Liski, I mean, I used to walk over to the gallery in the Senate-
Sure.
-and watch the process, because I was just fascinated on how the Senate seems to actually legislate, whereas the House was all theatrics.
So I would agree with you-
It's your opinion.
I would agree with you up until maybe the last few years. The COVID-related era has definitely played a different role. Now, don't get me wrong, we do get to have amendments whenever we want on the floor. We also get to make motions and don't have to prefile any of that stuff, which is really cool, because if I'm upset about something that I hear on the floor, and I notice that there's some language that's not right, even if I don't like the overall bill, at least I can hopefully change some language in there. So I'll stand up, I'll make an oral amendment, and sometimes they'll tell you, hey, great that you made this oral amendment. Can you get that to me in paper? So then we actually pause the whole thing, the whole floor will just come to a screeching halt for a moment, whilst we write it down and get it printed out. But that is something that's majorly different. Now, the reason why I say it's changed probably since COVID is they changed the rules on how we vote on the Senate floor. You know, the rules are now we can do basically proxy voting. They can report their vote to the whip, or whoever is gonna report the votes for that day. And we've seen it multiple times where we're sitting on the floor and we're waiting for people to vote, because of course, we're not all sitting there on the floor. So like you said, if people get up, they go, and that's part of the process, too, is that we have to be able to have those conversations off the floor and talk about the things behind the scenes. So that's why a lot of people are out of their desks. But when we come back, we'll have somebody standing up and reading, you know, 10 votes, which it's like, okay, so there's 10 senators from that party that's missing. They'll vote, and it's like, wait, that person's vote's already on the board. Why did you read that person's vote again? And it's, it seems like it's pretty orchestrated, like, oh, this person said they were gonna be gone, so I'm gonna read this vote. Well, so did they vote, or did they just tell you their vote? And it gets a little frustrating at that time, and we've called it out on the floor. Our own members generally don't have that same problem. We have to, we have to participate and actually text in our vote, or call in our vote before somebody will read our vote to anybody. So that's, that's something that I think is different. Watching the House, I've watched the House a couple times, and it's really weird to know that their amendments are coming in a certain order and at a certain time, because we don't do that. We don't follow a list. There's a, there's a predetermined list if there is a group of amendments that we all know about, but otherwise, it can come at any time, and you'll see it bounce back and forth between parties. You'll see it bounce back and forth between members. It all depends on what the order of operations that day might be. And so that's, that's real legislating, and I do enjoy that part.
I'm gonna stop, because I've never been there. I mean, I've been there and watched it, but I've never served.
Okay.
And I'm gonna tell you, I think it's a disgrace. And I think that our founding fathers would think it's a disgrace. I think the people that founded the state would think it's a disgrace. I think that every person who cares about this country would think it's a disgrace. You guys didn't create the system. The people of Minnesota have no idea how the system works. This is a deliberative body that should be deliberating, arguing, talking. It should be a place where the most serious issues of our state are talked about. And this process is exactly why the legislature should only meet for a few weeks, like they do in South Dakota, because what it does is it streamlines the process to make it possible for them to put through 10 times more ridiculous bills that interfere with our liberty and our freedom, that control how we live our lives, that allows school districts to run mayhem over our kids, this process, which isn't your fault. But we should be talking about this all the time. We should be educating the people all the time. The American Experiment should be doing a big white paper on this issue about what's happening in our government, that it's literally, it's not representative at all. Why don't we just elect one per, so I'm, I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop. Jeremy's gonna tell me, Susan. No, this has to stop. I'm livid. I'm so mad right now, listening to this, like-
Right, yeah.
You articulate it perfectly.
Let's talk about why the House has been kind of hamstrung. And the reason, first of all, 20 years ago, the House could make amendments on the fly. Guys like Tom Emmer, Steve Draskowski, Keith Downey, they were, they were making amendments and doing all these gotcha moments while serving in the minority. And the problem is, is then you get, then you get members off writing really conservative amendments to things and trying to legislate conservatively, and it forces these squishy members in the middle to have to vote, to choose.
Right.
Weird. The squishy people in the middle would love to have a completely polarized legislature, where it's easy to vote no on the bills that the Democrats are bringing forward, and it's easy to vote yes on the amendments, but they don't want to have these compromises where they're forced to, like, he and ha on things. So they, in order to control the members, leadership, which is empowered by the lobbyists and special interest groups-
There you go.
-that just want to get, you know, X done. They're like, look, let's just, let's just remove all these, these rogue members, and just have, we'll have to prefile amendments. And look, you can write an amendment, and you can file it, but really what happens is, most of them are written by the caucus, and so they kind of have to be approved by the caucus to bring forward. And it's just a way to control members and steer the legislature.
For sure it is.
And if I could add to that, there are times, too, when a member brings an amendment that's very good, or very bold, and they'll actually pull that amendment because leadership has said, ah, no, how about we just not bring that up today, right? And they'll be like, okay-
They'll say, you can, you can, you can introduce it, and you can talk about it on the floor-
Yes.
But then pull it, so we don't vote on it.
Pull it.
Correct.
Because people will tell you, the worst thing you want to, you want to have happen is have an amendment fail on the floor. Well, actually, that's not true.
Yeah, I don't mind having it fail.
Actually, I think the best thing that can happen is, is have it fail, because then the people that care about the state, Republicans, and everybody, will be able to know who voted against the thing that was put forward to protect our liberty.
Correct.
And it was that guy. And that person, I don't care if you've been serving in the legislature for 50 years. You know what? If you now have turned your back on the people of the state, if you've turned your back on the principles of our party, then you deserve to be challenged, and you deserve to be removed. And I'm sorry, but let's start really talking about how we got from the Minnesota that I grew up in, which was a phenomenal state, a state that supported families and teachers. How do we get from that to where we are now, where we have schools teaching kids to hate their parents, we have doctors telling parents they have no right to know what's going on in their kids' lives, we have literally, next year, wait till the property taxes go up, and people don't even understand why they pay property taxes. But, but, you know, and we have schools passing referendums, because all these conservatives take their kids out of the school, the schools are losing funding, and now they're gonna make you pay anyway through your property taxes.
Yeah.
Right.
Wait till people find out what's coming at them with their healthcare premiums, or, I'm telling you.
It's gonna be bad. 2026 is gonna be bad. We're actually gonna see the problems.
Right, right.
It's gonna start leaking out.
They think we have a housing crisis now. Just wait.
Just wait. Well, it's okay. They built a lot of apartments for you to move into. All right, here we go. All right, you guys. I hope, I hope you come back in a couple minutes, because it's only gonna get better. Thanks a lot. Well, welcome back to Political Pitchforks. This is when we're gonna start seeing why we're calling this show Political Pitchforks. So again, welcome back. And I want to say that I have the Susan Smith, we have Jeremy Munson here, we have Senator Bill Liski, Representative Drew Roach here. And what we're talking about now is really at the core of why we have a problem, not just in Minnesota, but in this country. And it's because our government has decided to put rules in place that really restrain the people who are elected to represent their constituents. And people think they're electing people who are gonna go and carry a torch, and go in there and stand up, and give a speech on the floor, and everyone's gonna listen, and it's gonna make a difference. And then our people get there, these great people like you who get elected. And what you find out is, wait a minute, actually, we have rules about that, and no, we don't really want to hear what you have to say, and we've got a plan, and you're not smart enough to represent those people, and they certainly aren't smart enough to know what we're doing here. And so we just need you to understand that we know exactly what you need to do, and that's why people like Jeremy, you know, caused a lot of trouble, you know, and didn't, you know, but he's, you know, he was a little bit of a troublemaker, and you guys are a trouble- no, actually, you're torch carriers for your people. So I'm gonna stop ranting about this and say, this is the conversation that we need to be having. We need to be having it across this state. Democrats need to have it. We need to have it. The people have a right to know that our government has been set up to not serve the people, but to serve lobbyists, corporate interests, everybody but the people. That's my opinion. And now, Jeremy, you can take over, and I'll let you be the rational voice of reason.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, like, when you look at someone like me, I was involved politically at some grassroots stuff in party leadership. But what engaged, what really activated me, my turning point, was the healthcare, Obamacare, the premium skyrocketing, and government not having the right solution. So I got involved. I ran for office to change healthcare policy, and what I found was that the rules that the legislature sets and imposes on itself, how the, how people are elected internally to leadership positions, how you're on committees, how you introduce bills, the rules that we just talked about on introducing stuff, pre-filing amendments and things, those all work against people who want to make change in government. And, and so, and the campaign finance rules, and how we allow lobbyists and special interest groups to really just kind of buy elections and things like that. Everything works against agents of change. And if we want to have change, then we need to change those rules or address those things. So instead of fighting for healthcare policy, I started fighting against lobbyists and special interest groups, and rules that we had in the House that allowed, you know, we have a rule that bans legislators from working for lobbying firms. We have, we have a rule that banned legislators from being a lobbyist, right? And lobbyists can't give you $5. They can't buy you breakfast, but they can give you a $200,000 a year salary to work for their company, as long as you don't register as a lobbyist, you know. So I focused a lot of my time on changing those rules in the House, which we did successfully. But there's, there's things that we need to change, but people, voters need to care about them. They need to be educated on what are the barriers? Why aren't you guys getting things done? They need to explain, these, these are the reasons why, and we should be changing the rules. We should be finding candidates who campaign on, when I'm elected, I'm gonna vote to change the rules of the House, to do this, this, or this, to make it easier to enact policy, or change, or to empower the voters as being their voice in St. Paul.
Jeremy, you said something really interesting right there. Campaigning on changing the rules in the Senate or the House. Could you imagine a voter voting for you when you say, hey, I'm gonna change this so that the voice of the people can actually be heard? It's amazing to me how few people understand what that means. It's something that frustrates me. I go out in public and I talk about the rules, and how there's quorum and decorum that we're supposed to be following. And it, of course, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, it's all about the majority, and if the majority, 34 people in the Senate, say, we don't care about that rule, guess what? That rule doesn't matter. And it's kind of a mob rule at that point. And it's frustrating, because we had that happen on the Senate floor multiple different times, where the President of the Senate made an interesting ruling, where it was against what he had just done literally 10 minutes before. But because the party said no, guess what? We, the answer was no, all of a sudden. And so I called that out, and actually, it did have a lot of voter, a lot of viewership when I, when I posted it on social media, and there was a lot of people that actually realized what I was saying. Oh, my senator couldn't talk because the president said no, and my senator should be able to talk.
They're like, wait, did we elect that person? No, we didn't. What?
Right. One of the most kind of in-the-weeds issues that, procedural stuff that is easy to campaign on, well, it's easy to talk about. It's hard physically, because I carried with me a 998-page multi-subject omnibus bill my first time out campaigning, that I was disgusted by. And so it's heavy to carry around. It's like, you know, six-pound brick. But when I would show people, this, you know, are you gonna vote for this? Look, would you vote for this bill if you were given this four hours ahead of the vote?
Hey, we got 30 minutes to read the last omnibus bill.
Yeah.
A really big one in 2024.
Just, just based on that, to say, we need to change the rules of the Senate, the rules of the House, so that we don't, we don't vote on these multi-subject omnibus bills, which the Supreme Court has occasionally, you know, supported our Constitution, which requires a single-subject bill. That, that's something that's easy to campaign on, and 99%, I mean, just about everybody I've talked to says, yeah, I wouldn't expect you to vote yes on that. Okay, well, you criticized my vote for, against something that you were told was in here, but this is the bill, you know?
Yeah.
And then they understand.
So I want to, I want to raise a serious issue about this. And I know people don't like when I do this sometimes. But you just raised a really important, four hours. Do you know how many messages I received from people about the proposed rulemaking of the Secretary of State on a law that was already passed? Okay? So the proposed rulemaking, this isn't even the law. Remember, and the laws are supposed to be written in plain language, which, by the way, you guys should start doing that. Take what they write, and turn it into actual plain language, so that average people can go, what is, like, all these links to other things, whatever. Like, average people are like, I can't figure this out, right?
Right.
So I mean, I don't know, maybe you all can, but anyways, I got dozens and dozens and dozens of text messages, every text chain, we need help. What do we, how do we respond to this? I'm gonna be honest with you, the law's already passed.
Right.
How about we take the laws about rulemaking, right? To clarify the law? I'm gonna be honest, you shouldn't even need rules.
Right.
It's supposed to be written in plain language. There shouldn't even need to be a rule, because everyone should be able to read the law.
Yeah.
Yep.
But how about we take those rules about rulemaking, which the office may propose rules anytime after the end of the sixth- rules anytime after the end of the 60-day comment, four hours, 60 days?
Yep.
Four hours to pass the law? We don't even have that, right? They could, I mean,
30 minutes, 10 minutes, whatever.
Actually, you don't even need to vote. We have already told you how to vote. So we don't even, you don't even need to see it.
You don't actually need to vote. We already know how you're going to vote.
Why read it? Why read it? Because you've already, they've already made a decision up here, right?
Yep.
So I'm going to say to you in my second rant of the day, to get a rule to interpret a plain language law that already was passed, 60-day comment period. How about we have a 60-day comment period on the law? How about we switch it? Why don't we just switch it? Then we don't need the rules. Why don't we just do that? Am I wrong?
No.
Yes. So Susan, the Minnesota State Constitution requires that every bill be heard on the floor on
Three separate times.
Three separate days. So that is the notice period for the public. However, what I found, and what these guys probably can attest to, is that frequently, that rule, even though it's in the Constitution, it says, except for a supermajority vote of the legislature, like two-thirds in each body can suspend this rule and pass stuff for an emergency.
Yeah.
But emergencies are typically just, oh, funding for this or that. And they suspend the rules, so the public is not aware of what's going on.
Exactly.
They can't come and testify. It doesn't go through committee. And they just pass bills off the floor under this guise of being an emergency.
Sounds like
But there's another way around it, too, Jeremy. And you alluded to it already earlier when we were off air, I believe.
Yeah.
The joys of vehicle bills.
There you go.
You get this fancy little vehicle bill. It's got a number, it's got a title, and there's nothing in it. It's plain language. It's one sentence. It normally says something like, such and such amount of dollars for this organization. That's all it is. And that's all it says.
A specific organization sometimes.
Right. Well, sometimes. And sometimes it doesn't really matter what it says, because at the end of the day, what they do is they do this fancy thing called the delete all. Well, it had, it had three days of hearing, because it got its first hearing, it got its second hearing, and it's sitting there waiting for that second hearing. And as soon as they, they get all their language that they want, they bring it to the floor, and they do a delete all, and they insert, insert here, and it's all of their omnibus bill language. And so we skip the three-day hearing period, because we don't need it. We already heard this bill. Well, no, you didn't. You didn't hear the contents of this bill. You heard the title of the bill, which had nothing to do with what we're doing today.
And by, as a person who has never served in the legislature, but ends up talking to people all the time about these problems, I'm going to say to you, what that is, is that is a fraud on the people.
Absolutely.
That is a fraud on the people, and it is bamboozling. I'm going to quote a judge. It's bamboozling.
Yeah.
That is the bamboozle.
Right.
That is allowed.
Both parties, both parties do it.
Both parties do it.
Talking about a bill that's as simple as a, a bill for a law legislatively mandating a list of reports to be generated, like something, oh, yeah, that sounds fine, we'll do that. It goes to a committee, the committee approves it, sends it back to the floor, it's, it's gabbled through the floor three days. So it's met all of the constitutional requirements. It's sitting at the finish line, ready to be put on the docket for a vote. And someone puts it on the floor for a vote, and then they delete everything, title, text, and they put a thousand pages of, pages of legislation that has never seen the light of day, and that is good to pass. Both parties do it. That needs to change. Calbar has a bill to fix this, along with his single-subject stuff, saying you can't change the subject of a bill outside of what the title was already in a focusing on, to prevent this from happening.
This is how we get the bills that change the way Minnesota was Minnesota. This right here is how they've done it. They've done it for years. It is intentional. It is wrong. And we have to talk about it everywhere. It's the only way. We just have to. So
We have to focus on it. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, no. You got to shine light on the darkness, for sure, without a doubt.
It's time to bring some pain to the people who are destroying our state, destroying our families, our churches, our way of life. It's time to fight the fight. All right, we'll be back again for our last segment. Hope you stick around.
Okay, let's begin.
Welcome back to the last segment of today's show. This has been a great show. I am so thankful to both Senator Liski and Representative Drew Roach for being here, Jeremy, obviously, you as well. We are talking about serious issues that are facing the state of Minnesota, the voters of Minnesota, and the barriers. And one of the issues that happened last session was, we had a senator who was arrested for driving several hours in the middle of the night and breaking into the basement of what was supposedly her elderly stepmother's home, who'd suffered from dementia or something. And the truth came out that actually, that was all a lot of mischaracterization. And really, it was just, she was just a basement burglar who was stealing something. And she didn't resign. The Democrats didn't make her resign. They in fact protected her. And we're now learning, there's a whole process in place that can help this, you know, kind of shenanigan from going on. And let's, Jeremy, what do you think? You, go ahead, you tell us.
Okay. I, I like waiting for the process to play out. Accusations, we saw people have to, you know, resign too early. I don't think Al Franken should have resigned in this, from the US Senate, because I thought they let the process play out. But I understand the politics of things. The problem is that she got to delay her trial over and over again because of being a senator, and that shouldn't have happened. And the whole reason why it really mattered is because she was the deciding vote in the, in the state senate, because the Democrats had a one-seat majority. If they would have had a three-seat majority, they would have let her go. They would have cut her loose. But this week, she finally, she was convicted, and she, this week, she had her sentencing. And she was sentenced by the book. And she is sentenced to six months in jail. But she gets to serve in work release. Now, she lost her job with the, with the government. She, she resigned as a state senator, so she didn't have a job. So she, in order to get out of jail every day, she went out and got a job at Dunkin' Donuts, which I, and people have criticized me for poking fun of her online, that she, I thought if she drives at places for hours in the middle of the night, maybe she just wanted baker's hours, and she wanted to work at a, at a donut shop. People have also pointed out how close she's going to be monitored by police, being in a Dunkin' Donuts. There's some humor there. I, I'm glad she's getting a job, and she's trying to contribute to society, and she's working through this. But it's, it's, it's interesting to see how quickly people fall from being a state senator to, you know, working the checkout at Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, it's, after living it on the inside of that whole equation, it was probably the most frustrating. You know, we talk about procedural stuff, and I think there's some serious procedural needing to be changed. This was obvious, right? Like, there was not a lot of evidence to support that what was happening in this specific instance didn't happen. In fact, there was a lot of evidence supporting that it did. And we, we knew the day that it happened, that this had happened. And so
You don't climb through a window in all black in the middle of the night with a flashlight.
You know right away, when you look just at the mugshot of her arrest, her arrest shot, you know, mugshot, it's like, you can tell she was definitely interested in doing the bad things she was trying to do. And so, sitting through the process of trying as, you know, we file an ethics complaint, we sit through the ethics hearings, we, we listen to all of the excuses as to why, oh, no, we need to, we need to let the process on the other side play out. No, it says right in our own rules. There's an ethical standard that needs to be met in order to be a sitting state senator. And that person could not meet that into that situation. And so we should have had the easy process of removing this individual. The same could be said about another senator that we know we, we were ready to remove. In fact, I was going to make the motion on the floor that day. And and so were a bunch of other members, because something happened, and it was bad, and it was a stain on, on the organization of the Minnesota Senate. You know, if we're going to hold ourselves to a high policy, which as we are all discussing today, we don't do, we should have done the right thing. And it just didn't get done. And so, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we made it go that long. And like Jeremy said, it was all because of a vote. It had nothing to do with the right thing. It had everything to do with power. And power is clearly corrupted at the Minnesota State Government.
Yeah. Well, at the end of the day, you know, justice was served. It may not have been on our ideal timeline, but it was served. She's found guilty. You know, she's sentenced. And so, you know, for me personally, I didn't work with her. She's not a colleague of mine specifically, that being that she's in the Senate. But at this point, you know, justice has served. And I, I personally, as a human being, wish her the best, and hope that, you know, she'll repent, and, you know, have a better life in the future. But that's something that she has to work on. And, and, you know, I'm not going to sit here and continue to go after somebody. I think when she's, she's already down, and no, no sense to, you know, kick her while she's down. But, you know, she definitely needs to repent, and, you know, hopefully change her ways.
I hope she doesn't. And I wish she would have done it sooner. Now, what I hope is that people learn from this process. Because every time our government behaves in a corrupt manner, it taints it further. And we have to start being honest about, the government does not exist to exert power over us. It exists to protect us from the violation of our rights. That, that's where, we have to get back to this idea, that everything they're doing is taking our power away from our ability to live our lives. There's almost nothing that comes out of the legislature, ever, that
Yeah.
affirms the rights we have. Go ahead, Jeremy.
So, so speaking of taking away more of our rights, unless you were waiting for this to start again in February, you're in for a treat, because we could have a special session called by the governor, so the legislature can reconvene and take more of our rights away, specifically around the Second Amendment rights. The, the reason why the Nicole Mitchell thing is important is because her replacement is now elected to the Senate, right?
Not yet. Nope. Special session, or special election for, that in, is in November. Same with Bruce Anderson.
Okay. So we, so on the Senate side, they're down one on each side of the aisle. So they still have a one-seat majority. But would the Supreme Court allow
A meeting without 34 people?
Pass?
Right.
I mean, I would argue it's fine to have just a majority. But I think, based on their ruling in the House, they would have to say that you'd have to have
34.
An actual majority of, of seats, not people present.
Right. Exactly.
And I believe that two Democrat, was it, two Democrat senators have said that they will not support any restrictions to guns.
That is correct. I believe Grant Hill's child and Rob Kupac.
Okay. So the governor's plan for enacting widespread gun confiscations or gun bans is not a possibility for a special session.
No. And, and if I could touch on, I, I think it's all, you know, in a, in a way, it's, it's all political theater for walls. I mean, he realizes the Democrats have nothing to run on in 26. The, the light is shined in on the corruption and the fraud that has been plagued, that has plagued this, you know, his administration and the state of Minnesota. I mean, we're looking at over $2 billion of fraud that's been identified already, and, you know, continue to find more and more every day. So this is an opportunity for the Democrats, and what they're, they're hopeful is that they're, you know, want to touch back to the suburban, you know, mom who, you know, who potentially had voted away from the Democrats in 26, excuse me, in 24, and now are trying to find a little bit of, of opportunity to get back to them emotionally and say, we need to protect the kids, we need to take guns away, and find a way to, to reach them again, and hopefully get their vote in 26. And I think by and large part, the, the general public is aware. And I know there was a poll out that majority of Minnesotans were for the banning of assault weapons, but I, I don't take any, I take that with a grain of salt.
I'd like to, us to engage in more conversation on another show in the future, about the fact that far more dangerous to our children in our schools than guns is the fact that they're being taught to not trust their parents, and to change their gender, and to do those things.
Absolutely.
That we're, we're using doctors to hurt kids every day.
Absolutely.
100% right.
Let's talk about that.
That is
Circles, circles us back to what Jeremy and I and Drew all talked about, of why we got involved in politics in the first place, which was health freedom.
That's right.
And, and it, it's a perfect segue back to that. And so that's
Who knew Tylenol was hurting kids? Who knew that?
Yeah.
Well, apparently, six years ago, we knew that.
That's right. Apparently, we did. So, right, Jeremy? We got a problem. We got lots of problems. It's going to be
It's going to be a long year.
Yeah. And, you know, and, you know, with the whole argument of guns and whatnot, and now they, there was a, I think, a frivolous report of a potential Trump administration that was looking to ban guns from transgender. I don't think that there's any merit to that. I've been asked that, and by no way, shape, or form would I ever, ever support any ban for firearms for any group of people, regardless of who they are. So I want to make that clear to all those people out there. I'll defend all of your rights to have a constitutional right.
Someday, they're going to say, people with red hair have an anger gene, and we should not let them have weapons either.
Well, I mean, we're looking at a guy with red hair.
I get a little, I get a little fiery, so I, I will, I will own that with the, with the badge of honor.
Rights are rights, and we shouldn't be trying to take them away. That's, that's the thing that bothers me the most, is, you know, they talk about it. And I actually said, if we have a special session, I'll be bringing pocket constitutions for all my colleagues, and I'll hand them out, so that they can all read the Second Amendment together on the Senate floor.
I'll tab them for you. I like to tab things.
Perfect. We like that. It'll, it'll help out on the floor.
Yeah. Well, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for joining us on the show today. Can you, can you quickly list off your, your website, so people can get involved in your campaigns or learn more about you?
Sure. So my website is liskifer senate.com. Otherwise, you can do Liski for Senate on Facebook. Those are the two places to reach out to me.
And mine is drewforhouse.com.
All right.
All right.
I want to thank everybody for listening to Political Pitchforks. Our goal here, my goal, I think Jeremy agrees with me, is to educate the people of Minnesota as, as quickly as we can, and as honestly as we can, using the knowledge and information of the many, many great experts across our state, who really do understand freedom. They do understand what it means to have rights, to have liberty. And we have to bring people to the table[1779.16]